Here.
Meggsman.
Here.
White. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received? Proposals minute. Move to the second day of discussion. All in favor of I?
Aye.
The opposed motion carried. Next on the agenda is Budget Work Session: Discussion Possible Board Action, Consideration of All Aspects of the Fiscal Year 19 Black Hawk County Budget. Good morning, Ms. Beaton.
Good morning. While I'm waiting for my computer here, first, I guess, I just want to go over the schedule and make sure that it works for everybody. So, the plan is to hold budget work sessions on Tuesday after the regular board meeting and on Thursday mornings at nine, if that works through January. And then we will, I will work on scheduling each department for a specific date and time. I guess one other question I had, the person from Legal Aid call asking about, you know, last year we had them all come do their presentation. Does the board still want to have that? I can schedule anybody who has made a request from one of the agencies to come and do a presentation.
I know we didn't have them all come last year. Some came on their own. How many contacts have you had so far?
We've had the food bank. Legal Aid is going to be sending in one. Did we have Operation Threshold? I can't remember.
It was last year.
I'd have to check. And we've had NEI 3A, I believe.
I would suggest it be at the very end, if we even do that.
Okay. Do you want me to schedule them to come if they?
Well, we don't necessarily, I mean, it's really up to them.
Oh, okay.
Unless the board members got some questions to ask.
Okay.
I guess I'd give them the invitation to appear.
Okay. All right.
But again, let's keep that at the end, so we can see where we're at with the budget.
Right. Right. Okay.
The 30th, I can't be here that afternoon. I have a doctor's appointment and I don't want to reschedule it because it'll be another long period of time before I can get in.
Okay.
Tuesday afternoon. It's a Tuesday afternoon.
It's a Tuesday. Okay.
We won't be going that late, anyway.
Okay. So, we have five departments, I believe, today. And we're going to start with the Treasurer's Office, because Rita has another appointment. So, in your packet, first I want to go over the items that are in your packet.
What are you looking for today, Susan? Just review the budgets, that's it? I mean, obviously, you're not looking for any decisions today.
No, not any decisions. So, basically, let me review the items and we'll...
I guess, Susan, we seem to run into some areas last year where, I guess, from my perspective, felt that we had approved certain budget, and then when it came back, we had to redo them later on in the process, even after we had the budget set. So, I guess I'd like to avoid that this year. Make sure that if it takes action, that it's clear that we're taking action on items.
Okay. I'm not sure, which ones did we?
We did salary a couple of times. We did, what was it, Frank?
I don't know.
Elected officials. There was a bunch of them.
There were areas that I thought we had made agreements on, and then we had to redo them.
What does that make of it?
Want to make sure that we're taking the vote, if we need to take a vote on it.
Yep.
Oh, yes. Okay.
If it's done, we don't have to redo the...
Yes, on salaries, we did, yes. So, I guess, and we'll talk about that here in a second. So, as we look at, let me pull up.
You can verbalize, Rita.
I want to go through what's in our packet here, so we can... I'm just waiting. I'm sorry, this laptop is a little slow. So, the first item, I know you all have the hard copies, is the summary for each, so for each department, we'll have a summary page. It shows the revenues and expenditures, expenditures by class. I've included a staffing summary on the, under the Board Budget folder. There is the salary projection. You can go out and review that, if you like. And then, just some bullet points of... Some bullet points of significant changes in the budget. Okay. So, this is what the summary page looks like. Up top, there's the revenues and expenditures, the staffing summary, and then some budget highlights down below. So, I guess that's one of the things we want to talk about. So, the departments have all entered their budgets. They put in their departmental revenues that they anticipate. They have entered their operating expenses and any capital requests. And then, I did a salary and benefit projection. We don't have any departments today, but if the department is requesting any changes in their FTEs or changes in position, we will have those sort of as a separate thing to look at, what is the increase or change for that. So, right now, under the salaries and benefits, and this actually is going to change, the bargaining units are all going to receive a 3% across the board. So, they have been entered with their actuals, what they're going to have in FY19. I have currently estimated non-bargaining and elected officials and department heads with a 3%, but that is something, as I understand, that you prefer to wait towards the end to make a decision on that. So, but we need something, or it was helpful to have something to put in the budget. So, I put in a 3%. We did have prospective consultants give us a preliminary estimate, which at the beginning was a 6.1% increase in health insurance and a 4% increase in the dental. And then, we, that was back when I was originally starting my salary projection. And then, I asked them again, we had a couple more months of data, if they could update their projection, which they sent to me right before Christmas, and it came down. It was actually a 5% increase in the health insurance and still a 4% in dental. So, I'm planning to update all the salary projections, benefit projections, for that 5% increase, instead of the one I had entered originally. So, that number will come down a little bit. And again, I'm not sure if you want to make a decision now, that 5% increase in health insurance is what we want to go with, or if you want to wait till later, or if you have any other...
I guess, in our review, do we concur with perspectives?
Yes. I mean, I, that's the, you know, best estimate that we have. I mean, I would rely on their estimate. I don't have any reason to not rely on their estimate.
Have we used that in the past for budget?
We have. You know, and in the last two years, we've had the substantial 20% increase, and so 5% is, that's very good news.
But that's 4% dental, too, for total.
4% dental, right, yeah.
Well, we just leave it in there for now. We can adjust it later, if we need to.
Okay.
Leave it in at the six or the five?
The five and the four, a total of 10%. We can adjust it right at the very end.
Okay. So, these numbers for this department, and I will update these and put them out under the Board Budget, but right now, these are using a different estimate, as I haven't adjusted that. So, basically, I don't want to focus too much on the salary and benefit number today. What I really want to focus on is, we're looking at departmental revenues, operating expenses, and any capital, and talking about those changes.
Susan, before we move on, with the health insurance, there are a lot of agencies that Black Hawk County provides the health insurance for. We let them know, because a lot of them have set their budgets at the projected 6%. As an example, dispatch center or the emergency management agency.
Right.
Let them know that there will be a reduction before they set their budgets.
True. Yes.
I think, I talked to Judy yesterday, and we have already set, haven't we, the Communication Center's budget?
We did, and I...
We did it at the 6%.
I had, it's actually what I put in, because they gave us a 6.1, and so I actually put in 7% when I was estimating back then, to err on the side of caution. So, that's what is in the consolidated communications budget. You know, their budget is an in and out, and any, anything will get adjusted next year, you know. So, I don't know if they just want to leave it at that.
You know, she was really relying on your direction. She had any problem either way on it. We discussed it yesterday.
Yeah. I mean, we could lower it for that. I could let her know how much it is.
Totally up to you.
Because that budget does run through the emergency management budget, and that hasn't been set yet.
Right. So, I can talk to Judy and Lori and see what they want to do. It might not be worth changing.
I don't think it is, but you could, Dr.
At this point, so... Okay. So, the first page, as I said, was the summary page. And then, the next page, let me just bring everything up, is a detail of the accounts. And if they have, as the Treasurer's Office does, break things down by different orgs or different service areas, so they have financial, and then they have tax, title and registration, but this is, this is combining everything and showing by the, by just the total account. So, you have all the revenue, and then down here is a summary of all of the expenditures by account, so that you can see for the specific account code, any increases, decreases in expenditures and revenue. And then, the next page, or the next report in your packet, is the actual detail from, that was entered into the New World Financial System, and this gives everything by the actual individual line item. So, it will break it down by all of the orgs, and it includes any comments or transactions that the departments have entered into their budget, so that if you have a question on a very specific line item, that information is here in all of the detail.
Yeah, that's, I don't think we've had this in the past. We did years ago, and this is good information here. I think this laid out real well, so I thank you for that.
So, going back to the summary page.
We had a couple of questions, maybe Rita. The, it shows the revenue actuals for FY17, but it doesn't show the budgeted amount. Do you know what that is? What I'm looking at, see how we finished up at the end of the fiscal year. And obviously, you show the actuals, but it doesn't show what we budgeted.
Yeah. I have two years of actuals, the FY18 adopted. I can pull up the actuals for 17, or the budget for 17.
Well, I just want to know if it was on target, or were we light or heavy, or...
I don't recall. Let me, let me...
And then Rita, while she's looking for that, this operating budget minus capital, and I don't know if you have any capital, we haven't gotten that far. Is there increase on your operating, other than wages?
The increases that we had for expenses, we're going to, the legal services line item, we increased that because this year, we're hoping to pursue, we have three more very delinquent individuals here in town, and we have been trying to work something out prior to getting to a point where we're going to take it to court. So, those, because of legal fees that we have to file with the court system and through Pete Burke, we're preparing for that, to proceed to do that. So, there's an increase in the legal services part of it, but other than that, there's not been a huge increase. It's just the legal services.
Okay. How'd you come up with that $5,000, that number?
Just a rounded number, because if we pursue all three of them, we based it off of more of the JL Watts one that we had a few years ago, and that was a couple thousand. We have three individuals that we're hoping to pursue this year. I don't know if we'll get that all accomplished or not, but we do have three individuals that, one, they all kind of worked with us for a month, and then after that, they quit. So, it's just a rounded figure that, don't know how many costs will be incurred because of the legal fees.
Rita, under the wages, it shows a 2.25 increase. Susan's talking about 3%. Is that bigger correct?
The wages, I don't myself, Susan does that part of it. We haven't had any changes within the office. We could have some. I do have three staff member that are 65 and over yet this year, so not knowing if there'll be retirements, but there's, very capable that there could be some retirements here this year yet and next year. So, that in itself will fluctuate, that salary itself.
So, on the salaries and wages, so the change is looking at the FY18 adopted and FY19 request, that last year, I think there were a couple new people, or you had some people moving?
We had a new person in the office, so the one that had left was at the higher pay scale.
Right.
The one that began, started at the beginning.
Started at the lower step. And so, some of those changes, I know, we had one person move to the Auditor's Office. They brought a new person in at a lower step, and so that's most likely why it's not 3% and it's only 2.25, as those people move.
So, it don't reflect the increase, it just reflects the overall picture of it?
Right. It's, the salary and benefit projection is really based on the actual employees that we have and where they're at, and so those things can fluctuate during the year, if there's movement from, you know, one department to another, or, you know, someone retires and a new person comes on, and that will impact the budget. But typically, you know, we can withstand any of those, you know, changes, usually because people leave at a higher pay and come in at a lower pay, and so it kind of offsets.
Thanks for the explanation.
Tom, back to your question. So, this is the fourth quarter report that I had done prior to the close of the audit. So, this, in the revenue, the Treasurer's number doesn't, it's a little off, but the budget was $1,468, so we had more revenue than we had projected back in FY17. So, we did increase the revenue this year by $183, $250. Mainly, we projected an increase in interest on investments. That was Rita's staff that is projecting that. I think she also increased auto-registration fees, tax sale fees, and then there were some other minor changes.
Yep. Thank you.
And on operating expenses, as she mentioned, the biggest change was in legal services, and then there were a few other minor changes in operating expenses that you can see on the detailed by account. So, the overall increase was $3,250. $3,250 in operating expenses.
For the whole department.
For the whole department, 4.58%. And then, last year, we had budgeted $10,000 for a copier, and Rita had no capital request this year.
Good budget. Yeah, that old copier.
Yeah, that copier, yeah. We're hoping to get some bids this month, while it's, they're hot and heavy for the sales in January, so hopefully, we get a good price on that and won't use the whole $10,000, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We can go to the Board Office next.
That one's probably all right.
Okay. Board Office, we have no revenues. Our operating expenses, I'm showing a slight increase, $800. Basically, I increased our advertising, publishing costs by $1,500, and I reduced some other line items, just sort of shifted some things around. So, we had to do an amendment last year, you know, we had more, with all the bond hearings and so forth, we had, our publishing costs were higher than we anticipated. And so, just looking back at actuals, if you look at the detail page, which I can pull up. We spent $71,000 last year, so I did bump up advertising, publishing up to 65. The year before, it was only 60, but based on where we're at so far this year, 65 seems about what we're going to be this year, and so I increased that a little bit. Otherwise, not a lot of changes. Any questions on the Board Office?
Just a comment, I guess you had some for the training and education. Did you have particular items or individuals or training that you were looking at?
I didn't, and I did leave that the same. This year, it was at that amount to, so that I could attend the GFOA conference. I don't know that I'll plan to do that next year. I will need to get, you know, my CPE requirements, and so I'm not sure if there'll be other conferences or other opportunities.
I would think, too, with Dana being fairly new.
With Dana, I would like to have some training. Yep, I would. So, I left that at where that was.
Does that include any board members that may want to attend conferences?
So, our training for the board members is under the Board Supervision Budget, which we'll look at later on.
Thank you.
So, as we're going over the department budgets, I mean, I don't know, we didn't really necessarily approve or have the board approve the operating expenses. We're really looking at operating and capital. And I don't know when we get to capital, if we want to look at their capital requests. They can talk about their, the reasons why they're looking at those, but I know last year, we did come back at the very end and go through all of the department's capital requests after they were all in, and so I was thinking we would do something similar this year. So, I don't know if you want to, you know, we'll look at them this time, but I don't know if there's any decisions that need to be made as we're going through these department budgets, I guess, just with operating expenses.
I think it's just more of a review and answer some questions.
Okay. All right. Okay. Sandy, you want to go next? We'll look at the recorders next.
Except the revenues are about the same.
We lowered our revenues a little bit with Susan's guidance, with what was trending the last few years. Mainly, it's the recording of documents. The recording is kind of economy-driven. I can't control what gets recorded. Obviously, the more houses that sell, the more land that sells, we're going to record more. So, we've seen that down a little bit. We've had a strong December. My December totals aren't in here yet, but everybody was trying to get things in by the end of the year, so we should see a little increase there for December. Some of the things I can control, we try to have a couple passport fairs each year. We're having one at the end of January at U and I. That, I feel like if we publicize our passport center, we get a lot of praise for that, the convenience of it. It's a one-stop shop. We do photos, we take care of it. We do get a lot of good feedback from the community on our passports, and of course, we make $25 for every passport we process here, so. That, I would like to see, we lowered that a little bit based on what has been happening, but by 2020, the passports are almost going to be a necessity for everybody. The driver's licenses are not going to be acceptable for domestic flights, so they're encouraging passports. So, 17 million passports need to be renewed in 2018, let alone all the new ones that will be issued. So, we're hoping we see an increase there for that, so.
So, domestic flights will not accept...
It's called the Real ID Act, unless they change it. In 2020, they're not going to accept driver's licenses as identification for domestic flights, so. That should be interesting.
A lot of cash we can make.
Yeah.
We continue to do the bulk orders for Ocwen. That's the company out of Florida. We try to encourage that. They send us requests almost monthly, so we're doing that as a staff. We work together to get those copies processed for them, so. And as you know, a dollar of every document I record goes to a records management account, and that is what I basically use for any projects that I have. So, we have been digitizing last year. We digitized the military records, and we gave Kevin with security access to those so that the veterans could get service almost immediately. They don't need to come over here and get copies of the military records anymore. They have access to those because we digitized them, so.
That's a balance of that account.
That's what I use those ones for. Right now, I don't know what the balance, usually I try to use it each year for those projects. I currently have our subdivision plats being digitized and our mortgage records being digitized, so I put about $25,000 in it each year, and I spend, that's basically what I use for capital. I use that for large projects for the office, so. We're doing our digitizing in phases, so we're getting there.
Did your operating, it looks like it went down, then?
The operating expenses went up $21. There really was not a significant change. Sandy did move things around, several things in her line items, just to make it more accurate based on what the actuals had been in the past, and so, but it all netted out to just a $21 change. It was just shifting some things around to accurately reflect what she had, but we didn't make any changes in the overall operating expenses.
Do you, I should have probably asked Rita this, too. Do you spend out-of-line account, line items out of one from another? In other words, if you're short in one, do you take out of another?
Yes. I try to do that, yes.
So, yes. So, instead of, you know, we charge things to where it should appropriately be for the line item, but then, when they're managing their budget, they're looking at their, you know, total operating expenses and making sure that they're within their budget. And that's kind of why I'm encouraging people to, you know, make those changes to more accurately reflect what historically, you know, where the money is spent. If they've got a budget in copier supplies and that's not what they're spending their money on, you know, I want them to make those changes, so we can have a more accurate...
Because it's hard for us to do the budging. If you've got an item, you budget the same amount every year.
Right.
And you don't spend out of that item, you take it for something else. We have no idea.
Right. And so, as we get this more, you know, accurate with the line items, then we can really look and say, you know, are you spending too much here or not enough? You know what I mean?
Yep.
I can look up real quick the balance in her recorder's records management.
Well, like I said, she's for the projects and...
Yeah.
Increase in postage is...
That is because next year will be our boat renewal season, so I have to send out 10,000 boat cards with postage on those.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Does that reflect, then, in your revenues?
Yes. Yes, because with every boat, if they renew it by mail, we ask for a dollar postage when we return it, so, yeah.
Are you working with legislators to get more money, you know, these different...
We, the Recorder's Association is doing that. We have not seen an increase. For instance, our birth certificates, our death certificates, we receive $4. It's a $20 fee and we receive $4, and we have, for as long as I can remember, only received $4. Same with our marriage applications. It's $35. It takes at least 30 minutes for us to do a marriage application. We receive $4 for that, so. That's why we love doing our passports, because $25 per passport. I get $1.25 for every boat I renew, but I get $25 for the passport, so. They continue to work with the association.
So, Sandy, in your record management fund, we have, the fund balance was 33,000 at the end of FY '17. And so, we typically, we put 25,000 in and spend about 25,000 just maintaining that same.
Does that roll over from year to year?
Yes, yeah, that's in the special revenue fund.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
So, Grant, are you up? You want to be up?
Yeah, let's go.
All right, hold on.
Been waiting for this one.
Yep.
So, the auditor's budget didn't have any significant changes. 250 reduction in revenues and the same reduction in operating expenses for a net zero impact. But I can let Grant talk about his department.
I think she just gave the whole story right there. Yeah, we'll talk about some more noteworthy changes in the election budget, but on the auditor's side, there's really nothing except the salary and benefits.
No capital?
No capital for upcoming year. We are looking in the near future to replace the copier in here. The warranty ran out, I believe, July 1st of last year. And that's shared by your office, our office, both sides, elections and auditor and IT, and so as a rule, over the past many years, we've gotten together to look at what to do when we need a new copier. The one we have here, you know, it's a high-capacity one that, and actually, the Recorder's Office used it when they had a lot of copying to do. And so, it gets a lot of use. It's been holding up very well comparatively. And so, even though the warranty has run out, since it's running well, I didn't think we needed to put anything in for this upcoming budget. If something dramatic happens to it, I, just based on past experience with the board, I assume that that's something that you would prefer to deal with out of fund balance rather than taxing for it in anticipation of some disaster happening. I have a rough number in our so-called five-year plan, which is just a very small, short document of $15,000. I think it cost us about $12,000 last time, so we're anticipating putting something in for fiscal '20.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're going to move on to elections.
Okay, elections, we do have some capital. It's actually a decrease from prior year's capital, but the, and I can let Karen address this. We have the laptops that we use for electronic poll books, which is now more or less a state mandate, and the ones that we're using are getting older. They're still working. We, you know, we have to look to replacing those as time goes by. And this is one of those things where it's kind of gone back and forth as to whether this would come out of the IT budget or our budget. We're showing it in our budget because it's our request. If you want to move it to IT, if you decide to approve it, that'd be fine with us.
It's easier identifying your budget.
It is, but it's easier for IT to have an overall idea of what's going on throughout the county if it's all in one place, so there's pros and cons both ways. How old are these computers?
They're 10 years old. The other thing about the laptops is they're no longer supported.
You should come up to the mic.
So, we did, just to give you a little bit of a background, we had been operating electronic poll books in just half of our precincts, so the capital request last year was to get electronic poll books in all of our precincts, which we are at now. And like Grant said, it has become more of a state mandate to do the electronic poll books. So, with our prior 32 precincts, those are at least a decade old. They do still work. They are no longer supported, so if something were to happen with them, they wouldn't.
Do you have backup for one and it would fail?
We, in the last capital purchase, we did purchase a few backup, and we do actually still have some funds in that capital request in the current fiscal year. So, we could, because we did budget for 85,000 and it came below budget by about 20,000, so we could use some of that to get a few more for backup. Like I said, the ones that we currently have that are a decade old, they do still work. When I say decade old, they probably are a little bit more useful than 10 years because we're not using them daily just when we have elections. But I do, being that they're not supported, we could upgrade them to get them supported, but that's about $150 per laptop when it only costs about $500 for a new laptop, so.
Why would you take the 20 you currently have and buy, that's one-third of what you bought?
Yeah.
And buy computers with it and rotate that many out, or keep some for a spare?
We can do that. We would still need additional if we wanted to replace what we have currently for that.
Well, not all of them, but just $20,000 worth.
Yeah, we can do that. Then we still, just as you would know as a board, we would just still have to continue to request to replace those as we continue to move forward.
I know I had a lot of requests from folks this year and election workers to start using I Voted stickers.
That's in the budget.
Those are in the budget, okay.
I too have had a lot of requests.
Could we get also the board a, I think you have 12 part-time employees used during election time? Could we get a list of the employees and the number of hours that they work during an election? Whether they work a week, two weeks, four weeks, five weeks, six weeks?
Yep, we can do that. We have that tracked, so.
We do that.
I want the number of hours they've worked.
And it certainly depends on what type of election, so.
Understand that. Well, let's take the last presidential then.
Yep, we can do that.
We can do that, and if you look out under the board budget, on the salary projection, you can see what they are estimating this year for those part-time positions, and I did in the staffing summary put just the total hours.
I believe there's 12 in election.
They have, I don't know how many voting techs.
We have eight voting machine techs that we use for every election, and then we have currently four part-time election clerks that we bring in when needed, which is typically only before a general, so.
So, the eight aren't part-time?
They are.
The eight are part-time, but we have to use them for every election for the type of work they do. They program and set all of our machines and deliver them out. And this next fiscal year will be a general election, so all of those.
Election clerks are the ones that work in your office directly, right?
I'm sorry?
The election clerks are the ones?
Oh, it's on there?
It's on the board budget folder. This is the, this is it up here.
Josh and Amy are full-time, and then we bring in the additional part-time election clerks before this year.
Where I'm going with this, and Grant probably will have something to say about it, but those individuals, few years ago, were temporary workers, and you made a request to make them part-time for various reasons. I was unaware that when we give a 3% increase, it goes to those individuals too. As part-time workers.
I talked to Karen about that. I don't know that that's necessarily true or needs to be, and I.
It's not part of the bargaining agreement.
Karen and I talked.
So, those part-time workers don't receive the 3%?
Not automatically.
Well, they did this past year.
They did this past year.
Yeah.
But it wasn't automatic.
Well, how do they get it?
Because you approved it. It was in the budget request.
What Karen and I talked about, though, was to not, because they have received those increases since we did that part-time adjustment, but Karen and I talked that we are going to keep them the same for FY '19 so that they won't have any increase, only because they've had that increase and we felt like they were at a sufficient level. But I don't know whether there was some miscommunication on that.
I don't think the board was notified or had the option. I checked into it.
I wasn't aware that they, I don't know.
The 3%?
We had, yeah, yeah, we had, yeah. I mean, there were increases in the past, but we did them sort of within the budget when we were doing that.
So, if we had a temporary worker that only worked four weeks, they got a 3% increase in pay? If that was the increase for that year?
Like I said, not, maybe not every year, but they generally got the same.
Plus, I understand also, are they not, from temporary to part-time, they're eligible for IFRS? They weren't under temporary?
They were not under temporary?
But you're watching that, and it's not in this budget here then, Susan?
Right, there's no salary increase for the, for these positions in FY '19. And these are the, I can print this spreadsheet out for you, but these are the estimated hours. This column, column P, is the estimated hours for those positions. These are the voting techs, and then for the election clerks and the PEO trainer down here. It's these hours, and then these are the current rates that aren't changing for those positions.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have any other questions, and the elections budget's kind of difficult because it really depends on the type of election, and so things fluctuate quite a bit from, or can from year to year. Last year, you know, we had revenue because we were doing city and school elections, and this year, there isn't any revenue. And operating expenses, though, have only increased 1,500 overall.
And one change that you're going to see in the future, you may recall that a law passed last year that combines city and school elections, so those will be held in November. There won't be any September school elections anymore unless there's special elections. And so, that will probably make a decrease in that, although there are a lot of things that still have to be worked out about how that's all going to work.
Don't they, do they pay for that anyway, Grant, the schools?
Yeah, right, that's a pass-through for us, but.
Makes sense, really.
There are some expenses that we aren't able to pass through.
And I would just add what the additional operating revenue or expense is that with the passage of House File 516 and the different election laws, that we are having to redo all of our forms, as well as we're doing more education because of voter ID going into effect, so trying to communicate and do awareness and education. So, that's some of the increase that you'll see as well.
Will there be additional precincts that have to be made available because people vote in different locations for school board elections as opposed to city?
That is a, that's a, it's a good question, Frank. It's something that we've gone over quite a bit as a state organization has looked into this. And it's going to be different in different places, because in some situations, you have multiple cities in a single school district, and there has to be a decision whether you're going to split up that school precinct or that school district into individual voting precincts for those cities. You know, we have the power to combine city precincts, to use combined precincts for city, for school elections, and so there's a lot of ins and outs, and as a matter of fact, I'm on a committee with the Secretary of State's office that's going to meet on Monday to talk about some of these ramifications, so I can't give you a clear answer, and it's probably going to be different from county to county.
Thank you.
And I just would say that if we were like the Recorder's Office and we could charge for all of our voter registration forms, maybe we could bring in more revenue, but I think that's against the law.
They called out a poll tax.
Yep. That was just a joke, folks. See, that was just a joke.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all the departments I had scheduled for today.
We, it seems that we got fairly early yet. Can we pick up some of the smaller ones that are pretty routine?
I would rather wait. I don't have the documents ready.
That's fine.
If that's okay.
And I was talking about medical examiner, civil service.
Right, well, I had. Yeah. I emailed Dr. Bickley yesterday. He actually had talked to Kim. He's got a couple things. There's a couple changes, and I asked him if he would be willing to come in and, you know, go over his budget at a work session. So, I'll find out about that.
Has it changed at all? I mean, getting any better or?
Well, it's hard to tell. So far this year, we don't have a lot of autopsy fees in. It looks like they're only in for a couple of months this year, so right now, it looks like it's better, but sometimes we get those from the state delayed, and then we'll get a bunch of autopsy bills, so. Right now, it's looking okay compared to what we, we increased the budget for this current year, and right now, it's looking okay. And so, I did keep the budget the same this year for FY '19, except for some changes that Dr. Bickley is making just on his administrative side. So, yeah.
Noel, did you have a report on extra revenue for the county from the city, or?
Are you guys lost?
We're lost. No.
In regards?
We can definitely try to put together some numbers for you to look at for the upcoming year. It's kind of a, it's kind of a guess.
For the services you provide to the county is that you're referencing? That would be good to have those.
Well, if we've gotten, has there been an adjustment every year, Noel, or? I don't know if we've ever talked about it.
I think in the ongoing, as a contract's set up, there's some adjustments in there that's set up, and they're based on the revenues and things like that. So, we can put together kind of a summary document or something like that, and then maybe look at it for five years and give you an estimate for what it's going to be this year.
Probably be a big decrease this year then?
What's that?
Probably a big decrease this year?
So, there's a lot of billing activity.
Thank you.
Anything else for this morning?
It is, well, thank you, Susan. That's really clear compared to last year, and way back in the day when we had a book this thick, it was similar to this, but you had to really look for it. It's laid out real nice.
Good report. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Susan, on the online, does it show staff, individual staff on the online?
Yes, out on the, under the budget work session documents, there will be a salary projection. there will be a salary projection under each department. And if you open that up, you'll see all of the, all of the employees and their projected salaries and benefits for that department.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before us this morning?
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, we are.
Thank you.